Well, the clock says it's 6:30, so we'll begin on time tonight. How apple colored work in a former school committee for our forum tonight? My name is Lynn Huggett. I'm the owner and editor of Newport this week. I'd like to welcome all of the viewers to the forum tonight, everyone in attendance. We'll be hearing from the seventh Newport School Committee candidates tonight. And unfortunately, Stephanie Winnefield, the eighth candidate, was not able to attend tonight. She had a last minute public that came up. But she will be given the answers, the questions, and her answers will be recorded and be part of the archived video that will be online. So I wanted to thank everyone who's helped in this collaboration for the forum. It's between the Greater Chamber, Newport Chamber of Commerce, their Government Affairs Committee, Involve Newport, the League of Women Voters in Newport this week. And very clearly, the purpose of this collaboration is to inform Newport County voters. I'd like to point out, though, that any of the positions held by any one of the collaborators does not represent the viewpoints or opinions of others in the group. And it's also important to note that the League of Women Voters in Newport this week are nonpartisan and are not either of those candidates. The formed recording will later be available and reviewed through any collaborator's links to their websites and on social media. Tonight's questions have been a combined effort of Involve Newport, the Chamber's Government Affairs Committee, League of Women Voters in Newport this week. We encourage residents to attend or watch the other upcoming forums. Next Thursday, October 16th, we'll be back here for the Newport City Council, a large forum. And then following that, October 13th, we'll have the Little Town Council come all the way here to Newport. And October 20th, we'll round out the Little Town School three. Again, thank you to all candidates for taking this time to participate. And at this point, I'd like to introduce our moderator tonight, Ms. Rose. Chris has been with Newport for about six years. And it's wonderful to have him here as one because he actually works in Newport.
Thanks, Lynn. Welcome, everyone, to Innovate Newport, the first of a series of candidate forums for the 2022 election season. Tonight, we are pleased to welcome the candidates for Newport School Committee. As someone who's passionate about inspiring young people to grow their confidence, commitment, and skills to positively impact their community and make their lives, I'm looking forward to hearing the goals and visions of these candidates just as much as you all. Without further delay, let me introduce the candidates. In alphabetical order, welcome Louisa Boebright, Rebecca Boland, James Dream, Sandra Flowers, Robert Leary, Robert Power, and Kendra Wilson Munter. I like that. I got one round of applause. Where did you go? This evening's forum will begin with opening statements from each candidate, followed by a series of questions prepared by our host organizations. We will have some time left in the agenda for questions from the public. If anyone here at Innovate Newport has a question for the candidates, please submit it in writing to one of our volunteers. For those of you viewing remotely, you can submit it via the chat function in WebEx. Please direct your chat to the panelists. So a bit earlier, the candidates drew lots for the order they would present their opening statements, a 90-second opening statement, and subsequently answered questions. It is finally time to hear from the candidates. First up, welcome Robert Leary.
Thank you. Being here, I'm a full-fledged thank you to all those people for the opportunity to appreciate all the essence of time we get right in the courts. This is my voice, first of all, because 30 years or 40 years of working in the gym mills, smoking your voice seems to go, so sorry about that. Here's a part where I'm supposed to patronize myself. All is raised in Newport. There's not many of us left anymore. And sometimes I'm being believed I might be a curse. Graduated from Newport Public Schools, and all six of my children graduated from Newport Public Schools. A lot of people in this community, kids that don't go to public schools and don't graduate from public schools. So I'm very committed, and Newport is extremely, extremely lucky to be given back to my hometown. This is my hometown, as I said, when I raised here. So grateful for living here, and thus I am committed to community service. Here are two examples of community service I am committed to. Between Involve Newport, I've been there 30, 40 years. I am getting IRS, sponsored license, and AR responsive tax repair. I spend many, many hours doing tax for people at no cost, thousands of dollars at no cost. I meant locations like the Newport Library, I meant locations at the Edward King House, I meant locations.
The dreaded red card. Thank you. Next up, we'll hear from Louisa Boebright. Very important detail. So yeah, so yellow card means 15 seconds left. And if that red card comes up.
Yes, yes.
That is also correct. Louisa.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Louisa Boebright. First, I want to thank you all for coming tonight and those who are viewing it through the video. I do want to say a big thank you to the organizers Involve Newport, women new organizations, League of Women Voters of Newport County, Newport this week, and Newport Chamber of Commerce. The best way to, this is the best way to expose candidates to voters and also to educate voters on the differences between candidates. So thank you. I have run and am running again for school committee. This is my third run, and I'm doing it because I believe in public schools. I want to make Newport Public School a better and stronger school system. And my education on professional background is in finance operations, which is about efficient and effective systems, and about lifelong learning. I chair the finance subcommittee of the school committee, and we meet weekly. I also co-chair the school building committee with Becky Boland here, and it is a huge commitment. We have improved Pell School. It's open today. And we are working on Rogers, which will have, we are leveraging the educational design plan and will engage people in a new system that will improve school outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Robert Power.
Well, I was, unfortunately, I had Louisa go in front of me, so she's thanked all the people that I would have to thank. So I thank you for that. I'm sitting here tonight in a gymnasium that was my elementary school when I was going to school in Newport. I went through all the public schools. I've spent my career in education. I've been four different schools, I've walked through school districts in the state of Rhode Island of various capacities. I've had 16 years in actually working in Newport. I retired out of Newport, but I'm not consulting for several places. I've been a superintendent in three school districts in the state of Rhode Island. I was on the school building projects for both Thompson Middle School and the Pell School. Recently, I've done fundraising. I did fundraising for Thompson Middle School. I did fundraising for Pell School, raised over $2 million dollars for schools that are now in trust funds, where the money comes back to the students. And I'll be doing the same thing for Rogers High School. I've also been involved in Public Education Foundation for the last 30 years, raising money and giving money back to the teachers. I have a doctorate in school administration, which I think helps me in sitting on school committee. And I also created a partnership between me and Newport, which is a great, I think, asset that's been chosen here.
Thank you. Up next, James Dream.
Thank you. I'm James Dream, and I'm a sitting member of the school committee. I was elected two years ago, and I'm actually nearing the end of my first term. But the reason that I'm elected two years ago are rooted for reasons that I don't know. And the primary reason is that I actually have kids in the system. I have freshmen in Rogers, one ordered by the doors as senior Rogers. So obviously, they come home, they tell me what's going on, and I listen to them. You know, I feel like I'm totally found. I know what's going on inside the schools. And you're not to take anything away from anybody who's on the school committee, but I'm going one-on-one with you that has kids. Not only that, as far as the city council goes, there's nobody in the city council that has children in the school system either. So again, that's a deep perspective that I bring to the table. And I think it's a perspective that needs to be represented, you know, as a parent. But the flip side is too, I'm also a taxpayer. I go back home. So I understand what it's like, like everybody in Newport is here. I mean, for months, I sit down and write that check in City Newport. So you can have both sides of the equation. And when I read the lyrics a little, my mom told me, "It's for the kids' parks." And that's what I tried to do when I ran the school committee. Every decision I made, the goal I've taken, is really in the best interest of the kids and how it's going to make the schools, should be better for them. And I can just rewrite what Mr. Powell said. I actually went to, this was our school. I've been here for K through 12. It's a great school, and I really feel comfortable. And here again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, Sandra Flowers.
Good evening. I too am a taxpayer, a lifelong reporter, and while I never did have children, I taught many in the Newport Public Schools during my 30-year career as a teacher, elementary school teacher. I have served the children of Newport honestly and tirelessly for those 30 years and 14 years as a member of the Newport School Committee. I have an energetic attitude. I'm dedicated. I'm always available for comments and input. And as a veteran educator, I seek innovative and data-driven educational practices. And I'm committed to ethical actions and fair decision-making. I take every opportunity for professional development that's offered to all school committee members in the state, far exceeding the mandated six credits of professional development. These are required for every school committee member. I chair the policy subcommittee. I'm on the finance committee. And I believe that my professional experience, my commitment to this profession, and my commitment to Newport students, and my ability to learn and research on all sides of issues are key strengths of my reelection. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before moving on to the next candidate, I've got another important detail. I want to remind people to speak directly into the microphone, especially for those joining us virtually from home. So up next is Becky Boland.
So I want to thank everyone that believes in me. And I wanted to start by saying there are many qualified candidates. And so what sets me apart? Well, I bring institutional knowledge. I'm a retired teacher. And I've been married to my husband for 38 years. We have six children, we've been in school. And we've had 10 military years. We finally chose Newport as our final landing destination. So I may have not gone to school here, but we chose to live here. So what this does, we bring the military family perspective, which is what I'm sure is able to do. And I've also been a parent, a teacher, and also been retired, really, especially using I in the capacity of this school committee. And my skills are working collaboratively with the community video, being prepared for all needs. And I'm being admitted to oversee the building project all the way through. So I'm hoping to get real evidence so we can put that out.
Thank you. And last but not least, Kendra Munter.
Thank you. For those who do not know me, I'm Kendra Wilson Munter. I am running for the first time. I've lived in Newport for 30 years. I'm a parent of a student at Thompson Middle School, an eighth grade girl. I am volunteer, having served as president of both the Pell and Thompson PTO. Since 2018, I have run the school building committee, helping guide the Pell expansion and the Rogers build. I'm a homeworner and work for local sale company. Running a household and handling budget-based projects gives me insight into the need to operate within the constraints set forth by available finances. As a school committee member, I will work to ensure that all students are receiving college-ready education. Whether they decide to attend college is up to them, but every student who leaves their school should know that they have the skills to attend college. I will work to close the educational gap that has only widened during COVID. I will work to integrate and celebrate our NACAC programs. We have amazing programs we should celebrate and those kids every single day. I will work to provide the administration, teachers, and staff with the tools and public specs needed to be successful. And I'll work to serve as responsible steward of the community's tax dollars. But I will always remember that the school community's primary concern is the students of Newport. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you all for your opening statements. How are we doing on speaking directly into the mic?
I guess better.
All right. You don't have to sing karaoke, but I do challenge you to really focus on that. So for our first question, each candidate will have one minute to respond. The subject is curriculum and resources. So the demographics of Newport's school age population are shifting. Newport Public Schools currently has 18.5%, nearly 1 in 5 students in the English Language Learners program as compared to 3% 10 years ago. In your opinion, has Newport Public Schools been able to dedicate sufficient resources to support these students? And what is your vision for how this program will continue to evolve moving forward? First up, James Dream. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Obviously, I think everybody can admit that the ELL situation is caused all by surprise. When I went to school, I can remember maybe two kids who sent to America that I went to school with. Now it's about, it's almost 20% of the entire student body is suspended. Can you hear me back there?
Now you're one love.
Excellent. Also, my training thought. So obviously, it's taking a considerable amount of our resources, our financial resources. So basically, what we need to do, my thinking is we need to get more federal funding. These people are moving to Newport. They don't speak English. A lot of them go to Rogers High School. I've heard stories where kids in the 10th, 11th grade, they literally don't know how to hold a pencil. So it is not fair really to Newport, you know, when we look at our test scores, that these kids, if they can't hold a pencil, they're not going to do well on the test scores. So I think the solution really is to try to get some more federal funding that we can add in the budget. But I think so far, Newport has done the best it can.
Robert Leary, same question.
Okay. So, there's my phone. We have flush for cash. Don't kid yourself. We've got $9 million S F funds, money still sitting there, which is a budget of $46 million. You create that in less than 2,000 students, 19,000 students that we have. It's over $23,000, $24,000 per pupil. So we're flush for cash. Also, we have a $5.5 million surplus. So cash is not a problem. When we hear this community kitchen, it's about that. Curriculum. I'm gonna wash your car this night real quick. So we have, we have a high school that has some kids go to school in Germany, correctly, some other kids in high school. They go on a hybrid schedule, okay? They're not there. So your math class might be twice a week, and the next week it's three times a week. I called up the Beth, I called up, I called up Rock. Oh my God. Well, don't get ready. I do it every period, it'd be seven, five days a week classes. It's definitely a change. I never get to Thompson. I always get to Pell, I guess.
Thank you. Sandra Flowers, what are your thoughts?
The percentage of English language learners has increased markedly in the past several years. And especially the older students who are at the high school, who have come here, who have not had the privilege of education in their native land, and they had to get out for safety reasons. They are, the efforts are being made in their education just before school, during, after school, where possible, before they go to work. Many of our teachers are studying Spanish, because that's the primary language that we're talking about here. And they are studying it so they can communicate more effectively with the students and, as importantly, with the parents. So I think, yes, we're doing well, but we can do much better with the support of those people who are funding us.
Thank you. Becky Boland.
Yes, as Bobby pointed out, we are flush for cash, but we are doing an incredible job right now trying to put teachers that are ELL certified in the classroom. It's difficult to find them, but we're also training these teachers with the funds we have so that these students, you know, have an opportunity to get caught up, you know, in our country. And so I have to hand it to the district for that effort to try to get everybody qualified as ELL, you know, English learners. So it may seem like we haven't, you know, like made a lot of progress, but we really have with these students, and they really have a lot to our community here. That's what I want to say. Very glad they have it here.
Thank you. Kendra Munter.
Thank you. Can you read the question, please?
Yes, I can. So the demographics of Newport's school age population are shifting. Newport Public Schools currently has 18.5% students in the English Language Learners program as compared to 3% 10 years ago. In your opinion, has Newport Public Schools been able to dedicate sufficient resources to support these students? And what is your vision for how this program will continue to evolve moving forward?
Thank you. I would say yes. We are definitely moving in the right direction. I think there's always work to do in every case. But I will say that we have, I know there's a, we are working on adding certified staff who are English, who speak Spanish and English. We are working on using grant money for scholarships so we can, more of our general education teachers can be certified as English language teachers, sorry, teachers for the English Language Learners. I know that Rogers has a multilingual program in ninth grade that they've added this year to help address the need. And I know that as a public school, we have to educate all the children who come to our doors. And I think we're doing a really good job with educating the children we have. And I think that it's just going to get better the more tools we have, the more teachers we can hire, and it's just going to keep improving. And the more that we can work as a community, the better our schools are going to be.
Thank you. Robert Power.
So I started my career in Bristol, Rhode Island, and at that time, they had a white light program. So the whole English language issue for me is not new one. It's been around for a long time. Clearly, one of the things that you always want to do is look at other districts that have had similar problems and the solutions they've come up with. And ironically, this morning, I was down in Broadway at the home of the support services they've now created for the school system. I was down talking to people this morning. And clearly, there's things that the school department needs to do a better job with supporting the students, not that the school department's not being coordinated. They're clear that they are, but there's more programs to be developed. And I think that one of the things we have to take a look at, especially when kids come into the high school level, is being able to give them some intensified program right away and not worry about, you know, some of the science and social studies kinds of things. These kids need speaking and writing skills immediately and intensified.
Thank you. And finally, Louisa Boebright.
Okay. Well, one, thank you for repeating the question because I think we have about 33% in ELL categories, so it's only 18%, which means several have graduated out of the ELL programs, which is very important. Is set up in levels of like how much you know, both in English as well as just academically? So I have to repeat what many people have said is we are trying to get many of these general learning teachers, also ELL certified. We originally brought in just ELL certified people, and that has been very helpful to learn and setting sort of precedents where we have a very strong director in that area, and she's the one who set up these tiers and then we graduate from them. But it is very difficult as people move into town regularly. We have a very large turnover rate, and that does make it very difficult. And we are doing as much as possible to improve those situations. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is related to academic proficiency within the Newport school system. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to the question. Newport Public Schools currently ranks in the bottom half of school districts in the state according to Stu's Test Census. So this is a three-part question. First, what do you believe are the primary causes of low test scores? Second, what should be done to address them? And third, how will you work to overcome the stigma associated with low rankings and be an ambassador for Newport Public Schools? Robert Power can lead us off.
So the first thing that people need to understand is, and I learned this a long time ago when I was looking at head of testing for the district, was that socioeconomic plays a huge role in test scores. So I called the state. I said, you know, correlation, correlation is incredible with that. So if you look at variance, you look at these trends, you look at socioeconomic, you look at the test scores, and that's the first thing we're trying to overcome in Newport is you've got kids that don't have enough experience going to the museums or not experienced going to the aquariums. You've got to try to make up that stuff. And one of the things I've talked about with this whole regionalization is putting money aside. I put money aside. I had kids, kids who could go on wheelchairs and those things to try to make up the things that they don't have. That's a very important, 28-year-old life that those sports learn from. So there's a whole correlation there. Testing is complicated. And the other thing I'd say is the district of Massachusetts is like Newport. We can go to the local, who have the test scores and see what they're doing to up our test scores.
Thank you. James Dream.
Well, I think Mr. Powell is saying that he nailed my head. I've sent the ball to their kids in our state. So obviously, that's going to affect our test scores. I think we're the best, we're the best, we dress this, get the kids to school. And in the past year, I believe we lost, we hired two assistants for the true officer. They're actually going out, they're getting, knocking outdoors, they're getting kids into school. And I think that's really, that's the best thing we can do is get the kids into school. How are we going to get away from the stigma? I mean, we need to work hard. We need to. Obviously, I can have a little bit more, better PR for the city Newport School Department. Because my kids go there, and I get these stories about them where it's been held. Some of these systems, I know many people in Newport, I've said, Santa and friends, family, move out of town, send their kids to other schools. But I can tell you, having kids in the school system, I'm having good experiences. So there are a lot of good things going on here. We need to hold some as well.
Thank you. Kendra Munter.
Sharing my experience. For question one, what do I think, what are my main, the primary concerns? I think we look at our whole child, our whole population. We have children who are coming to school. Tests are the last thing that we need to do. They're wondering where their meal is coming from. They're wondering if their parents are okay. They don't have homes. They don't have parents. They don't have, our children have a lot. I just wonder if they're not with our majority of our population.
We need to. Look, this girl will be a lot.
Jim said, we need to work with, we have to work with the population that we have. We have to leave the work that are and with the tests, and tutoring, who have the children, veterans, workers, who work with our community partners, a little, some of the whole child, not to fit in for them in the test board. And I also believe, we do have a PR problem. I'll say that Newport has relocated schools and we're doing that.
Well, I don't think I have to repeat what Becky and Louisa were saying. Because the ESF money as it is, there are requirements, standards that you have to follow when you get various kinds of funding. And we should also keep in mind that our administration over the years has been quite focused on getting funding through grants and community partners, various sources, to help get our youngsters up to where they're supposed to be and beyond. The federal, state, and local money does not, that doesn't all pay the bills. We are dependent upon a number of organizations. And the careful work that is going on in the finance department now is something that people should really be attentive to and really, I think we're kind of, we're really proud of the work that's being done.
James String.
So I'm not sure if it's a disadvantage going first or going last, because by the time it gets to me, I'm not exactly sure what I can add to the whole scenario. I can say as far as the budget goes, I agree with a lot of people on this panel. It's not all because of the ESF funds that we have a budget surplus. We've done a pretty good job managing the budget I believe this year. The first year that I ran, well, first year was on the school committee, I voted against the budget. Because one of the things I said when I was running, I said, "I want to make sure," I said, "Well, the question most to me was, you know, how can you improve the relationship with the city council?" And I said, "Well, we need to bring realistic budgets." So the first budget I seized, they want 4%, right off the bat. We knew it was going to go to City Hall and get kicked back, so I voted against it. And I can say this last budget, this last year, I voted for it. I thought it was a good budget. And as far as the ESF fund, like I said, it's, they can be used, hopefully, for a rainy day. Because one of the things that no one spoke about up here so far is regionalization. If that passes, you know, we want to make sure that we have money put aside in case we have someone proceeding to spend. So I'm in favor of spending all the money. I think we should save some of it. Thank you.
Robert Leary.
Thank you. So, this is kind of my alley finances. So we have not followed the rules, Dr. Powell said, and things quite known. If you get one-time funds, you do not use it. Do not use it on ongoing expenses. Find other ways to spend it on programs, whether you want to try. We've hired 14 teachers this year from that ESF funds. So in 2023, from 2024, all the money is going to go on. All that nine million is going to go on. Had 14 teachers alone, trying to keep them, that's over a million and a half a year to keep them going. A million and a half more in the budget. We have that five and a half million that we're talking about. So you need, you need to take that money in. I think the plan is every month, every month in school committee, you hear me ask the business manager, every month, you know, punish yourself and can't sleep, go listen to it. I ask them, "Do not spend this money on going to schools." And they do.
Thank you. Final question from the committee, or for the committee, is related to regionalization, and candidates will have two minutes to respond. What pros, cons, and risks do you see with the current proposal to combine the Newport and Middletown school districts? If elected, how would you guide a conversation with Middletown and Newport about regionalization? Sandra Flowers, you're up first.
Thank you. As I've said all along, I am trying to keep a wide-open mind about this. The pros of this, the main positive point of this seems to be this 80% rebate. And I'm, I'm still cautiously optimistic about that, that it would apply even to us. If all, I'll say, I'll dare say, if all we're looking at is to get money back, that to me is not the focus of what we're about. If the two communities can work together in this combination of school committee and administration, because that's who puts together curriculum, and not the school committees, it might work. I, I really don't know. I am still up in the air about how this, how this can really work, given the personalities of the two communities. I don't have to go into history of three years ago, even though some people will caution us and say, "What's past is best." For my part, you know, we have to look at the past to build a better future. Some of the positives would be bringing in more, greater opportunities for our youngsters of different kinds of career choices, paths to study, things of that nature, that we in Newport are doing already, and probably to a certain extent, Middletown is too. Because again, I'm trying very hard to keep an open mind about this.
Becky Bowden.
So I was fortunate enough to serve on the steering committee here at Newport for this regionalization. And it has allowed me to get first-canned insight into the intricacies of this proper proposition. And I'm very conflicted, because I would love to see what we have in Newport for all those Middletown kids, because I'm about kids, right? But I also know that I was elected by the, you know, residents of Newport to make sure that I support all Newport children. And my, my two biggest concerns are, one, that it is not a tax of weights. We, we, everybody here is going to end up seeing that tax bill increase every year, and that the city still gets reimbursed the $46 million, but we have no idea, no promise exactly where it's going to go. So I thought at one time that it was going to mean that, that we could not have a tax added, but it doesn't. That, and then I have serious concerns about Middletown. You know, we're in a really good financial place. We have a really good relationship with our city council, and those are things that they struggle with. They have a $2 million deficit in, in Middletown that they have. So I think this marriage is going into it with very different kinds of strengths. And I would suggest everybody here do the research. I, I'm conflicted still, and I'm still looking into it, but it's great that everybody has the opportunity to vote on this and to really read it for a while and see what it's all about. I also, there's a, I know that recently the city council passed a resolution on, to put money aside, but you can't commit a new school committee, a new city councils to a prior city councils' resolution. So it doesn't really hold a lot of weight unless they choose for it to hold that. So those would be my concerns right now.
Louisa Boatright.
So the pros are that 80%, I think, reimbursement by the state for the facilities for both communities. But I have to say, after we went to Middletown and asked for regionalization two and a half years ago, I was very upset, but I did a lot of research. What, and I, I started researching, what is the best size for a high school? And you can all Google it, and you'll find out. It says 600 to 900 students. And the reason is, it's opti- optimal for student learning, that the benefits are sustained, student-teacher relationships, sense of community for all, increased participation, more student input, less falling through the cracks. And that really sold me on the fact that the New Rogers High School is the right size. And so, and I'm really about, why I'm here is to improve the Newport public schools. That's why we're elected by Newport residents. So it really does give me concern that if we go to regionalization, it's more about efficiencies than effectiveness. And I really believe effectiveness is key. So I, that's my real fear. And so, and you can see these, there's several studies out there that you can find on the internet, and I can share them with you after. I will say that if it were to go through, I would want to make sure that all those people involved really go and spend time in the schools. Because as we've heard on this committee, that there's very good things going on in the Newport public schools that they don't get credit for. And I hope you all come to the October school committee meeting, because it will be going through the accreditation report at Rogers that really speaks specifically about some of the good things going on there. Thank you very much.
Robert Leary.
Thank you again. Now, I've got a question so far, I said yes or no. It's interesting. It's a lot fluffy, and we're there for it or against it. So, regionalization, if you go back three or four years ago, when they had Middletown and Newport voters for it, Newport voted for it, and Middletown voted against it, Sean Flynn was the daily reporter at the time, said, "Oh, last man standing, I stood there because I thought regionalization was the way to go. It was going to be one school, not two schools as proposed now." So this is not true regionalization by a committee. And I'm not prepared to go for it. And there's too many questions on the answer. What does it mean to students? Still have to go against that. If that came, that comes from Middletown, it begins from federal government. That doesn't tell you how that's going to change if that's committed. Federal funds to the districts, how's that going to change? You know, appointment, appointed finance committee, so you get appointed three people or six people each hour, whereas to run the finance of schools, they're not elected by you. You can vote me out anytime you want, you know, like I do my job, you know? They're not elected, they're appointed. That's scary right there. Middletown is in special under regionalization. Newport's not, you know? So they say one superintendent. You tell you, that's the biggest fluffy gray hang of your life. When we opened up Pell, I was there when we opened up Pell, we said we were going to combine all these elementary schools into one elementary school for the upper school principal and the lower school principal. Now you have one principal, two vice principals, a behavior specialist, and a dean of students. So if you think that it's going to be one student, they're going to, they're finally in with this, it's very simple. This is an emergency for Middletown. It's not so left for Newport.
James String.
Thank you. Well, regionalization, obviously, for the past few months has been the elephant. I mean, it's hung over every decision, it's hung over every conversation, it's hung over every vote that we've made. But one of the good things is, it's opened up a dialogue, and it's opened up a thought process on education. I haven't heard people talk about education in this in a long time, so I think that's a positive thing. And one of the questions, I think, is, you know, how can we do it better? I mean, is this a chance to do it better? And that, that's the unknown. But the, the pros, you would obviously, we will get $46 million. According to what I have heard, at $46 million, we divide it up into the number of payments per year and the debt on the bond, it'll, it'll come to the city twice a year, at $900,000 a piece for $1.8 million a year. Apparently, and hopefully, the tax base will be adjusted accordingly. The other thing I haven't everybody talked about is if we do regionalize the, and by the way, we're only regionalizing, at its core is, is the administration at this point. So if we do that, we'll also get 67% reimbursement going forward. So if we blow up a boiler down at Thompson and buy a new one, the state's going to reimburse versus 67% of that cost. If we have to build a, a new building for whatever reason, the, the state is going to reimburse us 67% going forward if we regionalize. And we also, you know, could have savings, and I agree with Mr. Leary, but it won't exactly show the savings are each year, but we should just be able to show some savings. And, you know, education is, is tied directly to, to money. There's no doubt about it. I mean, without money, we can't educate these kids adequately. So you have to, you have to look at the dollar signs, whether you want to or not. So what are the cons? I believe that was the second part of the question. The cons are the unknown. We really don't know going forward, and I think it's been articulated up here, that there are definitely unknowns regarding, you know, are we going to have to hire two superintendents or assistants? We really don't know that at this point. And the other con I did real quick was, we haven't been involved, which I felt was really strange. We're the school committee. Nobody's come to us for anything. I mean, we're, we're just like everybody in the audience. We're going with needs, we're listening to people telling us what's going to happen. And again, we're the school committee, I just find that kind of strange that we never, you know, nobody came before us. But I would say at this point, I, I am in favor of it, and I'd love to see it move forward. Thank you.
Robert Power.
So I think the, it's very obvious that the pro of this whole regionalization is the one. I mean, that's, and if people are going to vote their pocketbook, then that's, that's the pro of that. And I'm sure that could be expanded programs, and I said this before, that, you know, it's very simple, you get the two superintendents together that are here now, and they can tell you very quickly what kind of programs you could have, what kind of programs you put together. They both know their districts. You do the same thing for the finances. You can sit, you can, they can sit down and tell you with their budgets, what they can put in, what they can cut out, who they need for administration. If that answer can be there before the voters go to the polls, that gets done. You don't need a committee to do it. You've got two well-trained people that can do that. You get that answer. So people will have some of the, some of the unknowns, but there's always going to be unintended consequences when you do something like this. And that's something that everybody's concerned about. That, and as you know, there's an attitude that, that we had in the past. When I pushed for regional high school, and people in Newport voted for regional high school, and then, you know, Middletown voted against it. So, you know, there's a lot of, you know, hard feelings there that are not going to go away that, that I can see when I talk to people in Newport. I'm the one who's been pushing the city council, and, and now it's Middletown council, put money aside. You're going to get that, a lot of cash, let's, let's create some kind of fun for the kids, so we know that there'll be money there, so we can have programs for kids, as opposed to, okay, we saved all this money, the kids get nothing out of it. So, you know, I'm still waiting to hear some of the answers to those questions before I come down and say, "Well, in my for it or against it." You know, sure, there could be a lot of positives to it, but then I'm also, have a lot of hesitation because I don't want to get something that I don't know what I'm getting. And that's the problem. We have not gotten the real answer. We've had theoretical things from consultants and, you know, God bless them, but there's answers that can be gotten, they can be gotten quickly, if people put the right people in the room, and then the taxpayers will know what they're actually getting. And that's something we need to do.
Kendra Munder.
In theory, I'm for regionalization. This is not regionalization. This is consolidation of administration. I'm trying to think of some pros. All I can think of is money. That's all I can see is the only pro. And I'm willing to see that as a pro, because I'm not willing to gamble our children and our their education on the unknown. I've attended every workshop, I've attended every city council meeting, I've attended every single meeting that has talked about regionalization. All I've heard is possibles and maybes and hypothetically, this could happen. We've been given nothing. We haven't even done a visiting session to see if Middletown and Newport have the same goals for their education programs. We are rushing into this, not because Newport needs to rush into it. 78% of our voters in 2020 said, "We're okay voting for a new school. We're okay taking on this burden. We are okay." Middletown said, "We don't want anything to do with Newport. We're going to take it ourselves." And then when Rye said no to them, to their plans, the first time, the second time, and the third time, they've now come back to Newport and said, "Oh, wait, we do need you." I also don't think that this is our only shot. November 9th, if this fails, we can pick up the phone and call Rye, and Rye would be like, "Yes, let's talk about regionalization. Let's talk about real regionalization. Let's take the time, let's spend the 12 to 18 months, let's answer all the questions that every citizen in Newport and Middletown have, and do this the right way." We do not need to rush for 14 extra percent. We can do it right and maybe get 67%. I don't want to see us rushing, because we're giving this deal, it's a bad deal. I'm not going to let the door open for a bad deal that comes rushing in, and then we are stuck, and we cannot get out of it. I think we have the time, we can take the time. Middletown might not have the time. Newport has the time. We're moving ahead with our projects. 67% is still a great deal of money. Also, I'm really concerned with what goes forward, because the new district would be responsible for taking out a new bond for Thompson. That means everyone in Middletown and Newport would have to approve the school. And I don't think Middletown would come on board to build a new Thompson, when they set themselves up for 50 years with three new buildings at $235 million bond.
Thank you all for your thoughtful responses. We will now take questions from the audience. And just so happens I have one here. So the question is, during a time of staffing shortages nationwide, Newport is no exception. Do you feel that Newport Public Schools provides an attractive, competitive employment opportunity? Why or why not? One minute to answer, and I have the order here. Kendra Munder, you can go first.
Can you raise the question?
Can I repeat the quote? Yes, I can. During a time of staffing shortages nationwide, Newport is no exception. Do you feel that Newport Public Schools provides an attractive, competitive employment opportunity? Why or why not?
I think we do. I always say one of our best kept secrets to our teachers, I was, before I came here, I was at the Thompson Open House. The teachers were there, they were engaged, the teachers were upbeat, they had tons of energy, families were there, they were having a great time, and I thought, "This is a really good school. This is a really good district. I've got all of our teachers, I've got all of our buildings. People want to work here." The problem is, how do we grow new teachers? I think that's the biggest problem. I think what we need to be looking at is our seniors at Rogers, and identifying those who have a passion for education, and figuring out how we can nurture that and put them into education programs, whether it's at Salve or other universities, get them into schools, and then get them back into Newport so they can teach back in our district, and share their experience of being in Newport, going to our district with our new students.
Thank you. Robert Power.
So let me first say, you know, Kendra just talked about grow our own. I mean, that's absolutely what we need to do, is grow our own. If you ever want to get, you know, more minority teachers into this district, we've got to, we've got to have the kids here, go off to school, and come back here. They have family, they have friends, they have community. You know, you asked me the question, you know, coming to Newport to, to work in Newport. I worked in the Newport school system for six and, sixteen and a half years. I grew up in Newport, been here all my life so far. I love Newport. I mean, I am, I am Newport through and through. I'm going to get very Newport. So, you know, I'm the guy that's going to say, "Listen, I, it's a great place to work. I, I loved working here. I couldn't get a job when I got out of high school in Newport. I had to go, I had to leave town." But I got invited back, and then, "How'd you get here?" I said, "Well, I had, well, come back." But I came back to Newport. It's a great place to work. I think that most of the teachers you talk to would say that. And the only ones who really leave the district are the ones who are living somewhere else. They get a job here, and then they go and get a job close to their home. But the ones who live here don't leave here.
Thank you. Becky Bowden.
I agree completely with the last two people. We need to grow our own here. We need to get a program going with Roger Williams and Salve, and identify students in the high school, you know, future teachers of America maybe, and get them to stay here. And I do think one of the problems is that we can't afford to live here is, is an issue. So we have to address that, because, you know, there are people, we've also tried to recruit from other parts of the country, to bring in more diverse, you know, staff, and it's very difficult when they see what it costs to live in this area. So that, that's a major, you know, problem. But also, the climate and culture here, we've worked incredibly hard. Our superintendent, her communication skills have so improved in the last few years with the, with the teachers, with the community, and, and that's really, also, we also have competitive salary here in Newport. So those things work for us.
Louisa Boatright.
Yes, I'm going to say a lot of what's been said, but we do have very competitive package, contracts are very, bringing in diversity in staff has been a high priority, and we've been able to bring some in, and particularly in some of the management positions, but it's very difficult to do because of the cost of living here. We did, and actually, I think right now we're pretty fully staffed at the teacher level. It's the aides that we're having a very hard time at, which are very well-paying. Last year, we did a trial program, and we're continuing it this year, to pay five more hours for them, so they'll be here at the beginning of the day through the end of the day, and that gives them access to benefits, and that's to keep them in our district. If we didn't do that, I think we would be way worse off, because that's one of the real, it's a very important benefit that many of us have, and I think we should be doing that as the school department. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Leary.
Thank you. Yes, we have very lucrative contracts. You need, the contract is up this year. They need to do some serious negotiating, they have professional people in here. I don't understand why we don't, it's a management thing here. For example, at Pellwatt now, is, almost every single grade, you could have one less teacher in here. So for short teachers, we should manage it and do it as better with everything here. And that's, that's a management issue. So we're not short-staffed. And we really were short of some staff, because it wasn't done properly. Province had over 100 teachers, who are often known now as sort of Province. You know, Province had over 100 teachers leave, looking for a place to go. Not one of them came down here. Not one of them. Why not? You know? So I don't understand why people don't complain more about this. We have staffing, sorry.
Thank you. Sandra Flowers.
Well, first of all, as you said, it's not unique to Newport. This is nationwide. And I think perhaps the people in the profession themselves, I can just say ourselves, because I still consider myself a teacher, we have to almost market, market the profession and, and get people who may be inclined to be in the classroom to come in, to volunteer, to put some time into work with young, with the young people, with the kids. And they will see that, yes, there can be real joy in the classroom. That's an expression that we're really trying to get everyone, teachers, parents, and the children themselves, to really enjoy learning. And maybe if people are watching this might say, "Hey, I have an idea." So that we can get people to want to at least put their foot in the door and see what it's like to be in the classroom, and enjoy this whole learning process. That's just, that's my thought.
Thank you. James String.
Like I said before, when you go last, I'm not sure exactly what I, what I can add that hasn't already been said, but I believe that we have staffed up with our teachers. We have some of the highest-paid teachers, when you look at Salve, that's the entire state, it's a great place to work. And we also have a really strong union. And I know, I know that we're staffed up, we did actually get two new teachers from Province who did come down to Newport to work. And the teacher's age was, was a big issue. We had the same issue last year, and it was a tough vote. We had to vote to give them longer hours, which allowed them to get benefits. And I did vote in favor of that. And the reason I did is because we couldn't, we couldn't get teachers ages to stay. It was literally like a revolving door. So we did that, and it did add money to, to the budget, but I thought it was, it was a worthy thing to vote for, because we definitely did need those, those teachers ages, especially at Pell. Thank you.
Thank you all. Hold on your hats, we got another question here. You'll have one minute to respond to this question against a bid from the audience. What best practices are you aware of to address some of the pressing issues facing students, such as school safety, mental health, or the prevention of bullying that you feel should be introduced to our schools? Robert Power, you can go first.
Well, I haven't obviously been in the schools in a while. Actually, the last time I was in the schools was in 2019. I was the vice principal at Thompson. But I know that Newport schools have provided a lot of support services for kids over the years. When I was here, I had a human services mall at Thompson, which I don't, is not there anymore, but they do have similar supports for the kids in, in the middle school. I know there's, there was an alternative program at the high school. I don't know the degree of where that is now. When I was here, again, this was a while back, we had a pretty strong alternative school program. So, you know, and I know, I've been over to Pell School, they've done a lot of stuff with the kids over there, and they seem to be doing really well as far as, you know, supporting, and they have family service workers over there that support kids, and that's another program that I introduced to the district a while back. So I'm aware that there's support services here. Can I name them now? No, I can't.
Thank you. Louisa Boatright.
Yeah, the, one of the things that I think is most important is really making it a welcoming environment, with teachers being out in the hallways, and really talking to kids and having strong relationships with kids. That's one of the things. I know I know at Thompson last year, the superintendent brought in some, some people from outside the school to help. We've used a lot of consultants to try to look at best practices that have been used elsewhere and so on. But it's really also just trying to get the community to come together and, and, you know, speak out within the school and help each other so that some of the behavior is changed by positive reinforcement instead of always negative reinforcement.
Thank you. Sandra Flowers.
One of the issues you mentioned was bullying. That's an issue that you hear about. We have very, very explicit policy concerning that most nuclear policies. We've entered long and hard establish that, and any kind of abusive behaviors, adults or students alike. Also, we have a huge number of community partners that work with students in school, after school, many of the different programs here. They have the social, emotional learning component that is essentially part of curriculum work on all the grade levels. The Newport Community Schools at the middle and high school level are of just inestimable support to students who may not have at home a lot of those supports. A lot of that was, can't continue.
To create a brand card. Thank you. Next up, Robert Leary.
Thank you again. Safety of our children in the schools is paramount. It's paramount. So I introduced, in a discussion I had two months ago, that we get the police to the schools. And this would be the safety for our kids being there. It was left that superintendent would discuss it with the police department. I discussed it with them. They don't not have any officers presently. They come into school to ask community police officers, but they don't have as, as the program goes for them. The superintendent, I thought the police chief, I have someone on our show who she consulted with, said that, that they don't have the resource right now to do that, where police can never school. And I think the safety of our children is paramount when we get them in schools.
Thank you. Jane String.
I'd like to address the safety issue first. I think as a school committee and as a board, we've worked on the schools. We've done a lot actually to make the schools safer. We just built Pell School, we put a welcome center in. And whenever it gets into the front door of Pell School, they can't get anywhere else. It used to be open where someone could get into the hallways of the school. That's now enclosed, that's a safety area. We're building a new Rogers High School. There's seventy-eight or eighty doors at Rogers High School. The new school is not going to have any doors. It's an incredible challenge to maintain the safety in that school with all those doors. So obviously, when you have a new school, it's going to be a lot safer. And I know Mr. Leary and I did discuss a lot with school resource officer. I hope we can keep that on the table. What I'd like to see is maybe a retired police officer, or officers, plural, would want to go into the schools, get training, be a school safety officer. As far as the mental health, we've had a lot of issues after COVID. The kids' behavior was out of control in some cases. It's because they weren't home, and they're all just getting back into school. And I think the best thing they can do for behavioral issues is get the schools back to normal as quickly as possible. And I think with this year, that's what we've done. And I think we've already seen an improvement in the children's behavioral issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Kendra Hunter.
Thank you. We are talking about children. Our children are ages five to eighteen. We are talking about children who had a very tough year, especially the 2020 school year, where they were hybrid learning. They were home three days a week. Some, my daughter was left alone because I was at work. They have a lot of plays. So we are going to have to show them grace and give them time to adjust. We have to move away from this punitive punishment that happens in our schools because it is not motivating for our children. If you show up every day at your job, every day we're punished because you forget a pencil, or you forgot to charge your computer, why would you ever want to show up to school? Why would you want to come to school? The place that's supposed to be loving, caring, and lift you up when it turns into a place where you are punished? So I think we need to look at how we're treating our children, their mental health. We have to work on bullying. Bullying is a huge deal. Bullying has gone on since I was in middle school. My daughter was dealt with bullying. I don't know how we solve bullying. It has been, it's been the same since I think dawn, so.
Thank you. Robert Leary.
How do you like?
No, no. That's okay. Becky Bowman. Sorry about that.
Well, I agree with everything that my, my next door neighbor just said about the safety issues. But the biggest thing too is what Kendra just said. It's about schools need to be a joyful place. They need to be a place that kids can come in and know that they're going to get a pat on the back, they're not going to be punished for everything. And that the teachers are joyful. And this is something we're really working on because, you know, they come to school and know they're going to be fed. There's food there for them. There's after-school programs that, you know, they're going to be accepted, and their needs are going to be met, especially their mental health needs. And it becomes a different kind of environment. All of us like go to a place where we like to work. And I think that that is a real, a really big task at hand. But we're really working hard on making schools joyful for children.
Thank you. Let's play a game. Raise your hand if you did not have a chance to answer that question. All right. Well, thank you everyone for those thoughtful responses to this question and all of this evening's questions. At this time, we'd like to give you an opportunity to issue closing statements. You have ninety seconds to leave the constituents with your final thoughts on your candidacy for Newport School Committee. And Kendra Hunter? I can stall for a second. Don't you say something?
No, I got it.
Okay. Cool.
I got it. Since I, I didn't make a call. First, I'd like to thank Involve Newport, the League of Women Voters, Newport County Chamber of Commerce, and Newport this week for hosting. And to Chris Groves for from Fab Newport for moderating this wonderful forum. To the voters in Newport, I would like to say, if you vote for me, I will always work and fight for the students and schools in Newport. I will work to make Newport schools the very best they can be, schools that reflect our city. Newport is considered a world-class city. We should have world-class schools. We should have, I believe that a diverse school committee is the best way to meet the needs of the students, families, and taxpayers. If I'm elected, I look forward to working with the other elected school committee members to continue and build upon the positive forward growth of Newport Public Schools. As a parent, I have insight and versatile knowledge of what is happening in our schools and can work to make sure our policies support and improve our students' time in our schools. I'm confident of proper resources and materials we can continue to offer and build on a high-quality education that meets the needs of all students. This will not only keep families in the Newport Public School System, but attract new families to our schools. And thank you for your trust and your vote. And remember to vote eight on November eighth. Because I'm the last on the ballot.
Thank you. Sandra Flowers.
Thank you everyone for being here tonight. And just want to state that I was not waffling when I answered the question of our regionalization. And anyone heard what I said in my own personal introduction? I said, I always think of all sides of an issue. It's not just two. There are many. So I'm certainly not waffling in this area. And I can go on with a few more details. People want to speak later. But there are two quotes that I have on my automatic signature on my email. And the first is from Benjamin Franklin, who said, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." So that's what we have to think about when we look at money and budgets and things of that sort. Are we getting our money's worth? Another quote, "The strength of the United States is the sum total of the education and the character of our people." Now, who said that? Senator Clayborne Pell. So we have one of our own folks say, who said that. And we have to look at that really and say, what we're investing in our education of our students, ourselves also. And the character that we build up in our young people, that's going to pay us back many, many more times. And thank you very much for considering me to be real.
Thank you. Robert Leary.
Thank you. Let's be clear. Education matters, is still the goal. I grew up in the bad section of Newport. And the way I felt my brother was in, yeah, education, that still is. So you need, as a public, to vote up to demand school committee, demand accountability, demand transparency, demand truth, not just spin. Demand better test results. Demand better attendance and decreasing tardiness. Demand performance-based contracts. There's nothing in Patrick to that. Newport, well, Newport schools have to turn around. They have to turn around. Have to turn around your test results, and you have to do it. We need and actually can turn this around. The best way to describe me is Bruce Law, owns the Dallas Avenue franchise. Bruce came up and he said, I can't believe we're running again. I said, Bruce, you know what he reminded me of? He said, who, Bruce? He says, the Terryton cigarette ads. Now, anybody under seventy-eight-year-old out there may not know what Terryton cigarette ads are. They come up, the guy come out of the store, he got Terryton pack of cigarettes in his ear. And he walks out, and he looks, he's got my guy, and he said, I've got to fight for switch. He said, that's your bottom. You fight for these kids. And Newport this week has said to me, Leary, in the COVID paper, Leary is a congo, and having to vote both students and the taxpayers. And that's what you get to get beat. I think in one vote, I hope to get more votes. But that is me, I'm going to fight for you.
Thank you. Jane String.
When I first announced that I was going to run, actually, even my time on the school committee, I thought people would go up to me and go, why in the world do you want to do this? Don't you just sit and listen to people complain all the time? And we do. But I have to say, being on the school committee, my response is, yeah, now I can do something about it. So I think I've been very responsive to teachers, students, parents who called me up. You know, I always return phone calls, I always return emails. I think I've done the best I can in that department. And on top of that, we've had a lot of successes in the past year. I think for one term, you know, we have a surplus. It's a five-minute-a-dollar surplus. Yes, some of it's from master funds. The rest of it, I think it's, it's from pretty good management. Pell School, for example, that was finished on time and under budget. And how often can you actually say that? I advocated to get the kids off this hybrid model and back in school as quickly as possible. Because I knew, like, for kids to get back to normal, they needed to get back to school. And I can say that as a father. During the whole hybrid situation, and though Kendra had, she said the same thing. My kids were like, oh, I didn't know what they were doing. There was a lot of kids in the hybrid model that just disappeared. So, you know, I thought it was really important to get the kids back in school, and I worked hard to do that. And we can, we can get it accomplished. And I also, I work well with people on the school committee. I think I'm level-headed. I have common sense, I'm a pragmatist. And I hope that the next few years, at least a year and a half, we transition passes. I can get your vote and represent you on the school committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Louisa Boatright.
Again, thank you all for coming. Really appreciate you coming in person. And I want to thank the organizers for putting this on. In summary, my entire focus on the school committee is to improve the Newport Public School System. And I've worked hard on the facilities committee, which is a lot of time and effort. And we have done some very good things on security and on the whole educational plan that goes behind. The buildings for both Pell as well as Rogers are very well fied and a lot of work. As far as the budget, we have weekly budget meetings. And we really do work very hard to call out savings, talk to the finance director to make sure we know, and do our oversight, but really focus on new ways for revenue as well as cost savings. We focus on our programs and our staff. And the most important thing to me is to be part of the solution and to, at all times, I think we've worked very well as a committee, but to make sure our decisions support our goals, which is effective in improved education. And to leverage best practices, to be timely on our decisions, and to not negatively impact operations or school reputation. And I ask for your vote on November eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Bowman.
I too am asking for your support on November eighth. And I have chaired the Health and Wellness Committee for many years now. We have lots of great initiatives that are taking place in terms of feeding children. And we all know that children that are fed well can, can learn. And I wanted to remain on that committee and also on the Finance Committee I served for the last few years. But also, I really want to finish this building project and see it out. Lisa and I have spent many, many hours a week on, probably twenty or thirty hours a week on this building project, making sure we get it right, the education, the component of it, making sure that, you know, everything's placed where it should be. And so I would love to have your support for that. We have a long haul ahead of us on that Rogers project. And I also want, you know, I think the most important thing to me is about every child, every day. It's about, every day is a new day to the child. And it should be that way with teachers. And I promise we'll work collaboratively no matter where, how regionalization turns out, whether it passes or doesn't. I will support whatever our community wants. And I look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Robert Power.
I also want to thank you for having this forum tonight. And first, I'd like to thank all the present school committee members who had to go through COVID and run a school system. I mean, that was a horrible thing that we all just have to go through. And certainly, for you folks on the committee, having to do that. So I applaud you for that, and thank you for that. You know, I have a strong educational background. I'm familiar with Newport schools and many other school districts in the state, which allows me to bring to the table a lot of new ideas, different ideas. I have a lot of different tastes, I've seen a lot of different things. I've had a long history of involvement in public schools here. Not just working in schools. I've mentored children at the high school. I've raised money for the public schools. I've never left Newport Public Schools. Even I are retired. I've always stayed involved with the schools. I've been to lots of different events and have stayed in course. And I've stayed in course. Even if I don't get elected to the school committee, I'm still going to do the raising of the money for Rogers High School, creating an endowment for that. I do think I have some skills if we get into a situation where we do combine the two districts. You know, I can help in that, in that respect. I've been on the school committee before, and I've worked with many other school committees. So the school committee's not unfamiliar to me. I have that skill set. So I think, and I have the ability to think outside the box. And I think that's always helped. So I ask for your support. And like elected, that's worth it. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time and all your work. I also see that there is a Rogers student in the audience tonight. I just want to recognize that. And, you know, because we're, the Sterling community is in the business of supporting its young people. And so that's awesome.